Commemoration of nine eleven. Thank you. First item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes from eight twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Not twenty-three to twenty-eight. I make a motion, we approve the minutes of August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Is second?
Second.
Second. Corrections.
On page three. One, two, three, four, fifth, fifth paragraph down is about the tire. Is it Pete's Tire Barn rather than Barg or?
Tire Barn.
Yeah, there's an extra letter in there.
Yep.
Okay. That's the only thing I found on the whole thing.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, just for clarification, on page three, about the motion, we resolved the motion or the amount for the purchase order for Milton Cat was going to be thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. And the minutes reflect thirty-four thousand, nine twelve seventy-five. I'm not sure which number was correct, Mike, do you know?
Not looking back in my pocket, I don't.
I think it's thirty-seven.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, thirty-seven was the number, I don't know what the rest of it is.
Yeah, so I think that that needs to be corrected.
Which paragraph are you?
Because that was the, that was the, that's the one, two, three, fourth paragraph down on page three. So Allison, I'm not sure if.
Yeah, if you look on page two, at the bottom, the last paragraph, that's where you're. You can just take that paragraph out on page three because it's covered on page two at the bottom.
Yeah, let's do that then because, well, no, because that's specific to that purchase order number and that has to be in the minutes for the audit. Oh, oh, it is redundant. You're right, it is redundant, Allison. So I would suggest we remove that paragraph, the one, two, three, fourth paragraph on page three. Does that make sense?
Yep, that was my, one of, one of my lists.
And that's all I got, Jim.
Okay, Joe?
On, under approval of the minutes on page one, where it says for page one, Mary Lee Harris should be added, add a B E after should. On page two, under payout to Rutland County Sheriff's Department, department is misspelled. Later in that paragraph, second line from the bottom, Joshua Piantek, I believe is also misspelled. In the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, last line, we reference U G F Municipal Energy Pavilions Program. I think that should probably say resilience program. And that's it.
That's it? Bob, are you there?
He wasn't going to.
I don't see him. I guess we'll have to get him in.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the minutes with the corrections indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Citizens' concerns, comments are under concerns, item not on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board items not on the agenda? Oh, this is good.
I have a question.
Sure.
Let's take it.
Who is it?
Mary Drogi.
Yes, Mary.
I would like to respectfully request that the select board allocate enough ARPA funds to pay off Houberton's eleven percent share of C V S so that we can simplify the decision-making for the C V S building. Seems like there's a lot of ARPA money that's being allocated to different departments for different needs. And it seems like this would be a good use of these funds.
Is that it, Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe?
I would comment, Mary, that, well, let me speak personally. I would not oppose that idea. In fact, I would support it if our two select boards could agree on a purchase and sale price. We have attempted to do that and we cannot agree.
Any other comments? Not?
Well, may, I mean, one thing I would ask you to consider is, I don't know the specifics because it's all been in executive session, but maybe we should consider giving Houberton what they're asking for. If it's eleven percent of what the buildings are praised for. If it's more than that, no, that would be ridiculous, but.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, we'll move on. Appointment of Karen Oakman as zoning administrator. We have a letter from Karen and we also have a letter from Jim Thomas, the interim zoning administrator.
And Karen's here too.
Karen's here. Hi, Karen. You want to address the board, Karen? You don't have to, but you'd like to.
This will be my first time. No, I just wanted to let the board know that.
Karen, can you come up to the podium only so the mic can pick up your voice better?
Good evening. Just wanted to let the board know that I started working as an assistant zone administrator on July twenty-fifth. And since then, I've been in training under the, under the supervision of Jim Thomas. It's been seven weeks and both Jim and I, I believe, agreed that I'm ready to become the zone administrator. And I've been properly trained to kind of go and do it on my own. Jim has agreed to help as needed if, if there are any questions or any issues that may come up. But I think I'm fully prepared and with the background I have, I feel I'm very qualified for the position.
Thank you. Any questions for Karen? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion that we accept the resignation of James Thomas as our interim zoning administrator and thank him for his service. And that we appoint Karen L. Oakman to the position of zoning administrator for a period of three years commencing on this date, which is September tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Eleven.
Eleven, sorry.
I'll second that.
Second. For clarification, I believe Jim was willing to stay on as a consultant.
Yeah, she stated that.
He'll stay as a consultant as need be.
Okay, all right.
And we're, we're going to transition his presence for the next few weeks just to have the outdoors open to the residents until I can fully take over.
Right. Is it necessary to include that in the motion to have Jim as a consultant?
I don't think so.
Don't think so? Don't think so? Okay. Thank you very much, Karen. Good luck.
Have you voted on this? We haven't voted on this yet, Jim.
Pardon? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Request for local businesses selling transfer stations stickers to receive a five percent discount to cover the cost of credit card processing fees. Mike, can you comment on this?
I'd rather not. We'd do it anyway. That's why I asked Joe to be here and he was going to be here, but he was told seven fifteen, seven twenty, so he may show up.
I don't think he's.
Would the board be agreeable to move it down on the agenda?
Sure.
To see if he shows up so he can explain to you what he's looking for? So I don't.
I thought he got a message today that he wasn't going to be able to because he was short of person.
I didn't get that message. If you, if you heard that, then it's probably true.
I think I heard it from the administrative assistant.
All right, so if you don't mind, then I'll speak on this turn.
Okay, go ahead.
So Joe had approached me months ago and it came before this board previously. And Mr. Combs had mentioned.
Just a point of order, have you given his last name?
Oh, Joe Sessok.
Thank you.
And this is for Beverage King, related to that business. So there was more information required. I think that Joe's ready to discuss with this board. But basically, he buys stickers from the town and resells them at his business. And he buys them for a reduced price. But he's paying the, the administrative or convenience fees of credit cards. And he just recently switched his credit card processor. And it's costing him more than what he's getting for the, the discount. So he was asking it to be raised to five percent to be able to cover his costs of the people purchasing these stickers with their credit card or debit cards. That's kind of the, in a nutshell.
There he is.
What's the?
Well, I'm going to stop speaking now.
Don't sit down, Joe.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Can you have the podium, Joe?
Sure.
Just so the, the microphones are on the ceilings there, so it doesn't pick it up very well from the back.
Please sign in on the guest list on your way out, please.
Okay, thank you. Hi.
So I, I was trying to explain to you what the, the purpose behind this request was. So I probably did a crappy job, Joe, so I'll let you go ahead and explain that.
All right, I'm just, I'm here on behalf of all the private establishment stores, whatever that allow the town's dump stickers to get sold and easier for people to access rather than just one spot. So we're happy to do that, but most people don't carry cash anymore. So they always want to use their cards, credit card, debit card. And that costs me as a business owner three percent on every transaction. So I get a two and a half percent discount from the towns every time I sell a sticker, we're losing money. So we're just trying to get it up a little bit so we're not losing money on the sale of the tickets, stickers.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Joe, the, my current, if I recall our conversation, your current discount is two and a half percent?
Two and a half percent.
So you're asking to raise it from two and a half to five percent?
I mean, I'd be happy with four, really. I mean, it's just that I don't want to keep losing money.
What's your, what's your usual credit card convenience or fee that you have to pay your transaction?
Three percent.
Can it be as much as five?
People use American Express, it can go higher. It can go four.
Because I think it's fair to say you're not in this for the money, right?
No, I'm not going to make money. I mean, if you make a penny or two, it's okay, but losing a few cents, I don't think is just fair.
I don't think that's fair either. For the, just so everyone knows, Mr. Sessok had a conversation with me a while ago. And I thought his request was reasonable then and I still do. So I'm prepared to make a motion that we change the discount on transfer station stickers to local businesses that are selling them from two and a half percent to five percent.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, discussion? Joe? Do you have something?
No.
No. Mary Lee?
How many other firms are doing this?
I'm only aware of one, but that's.
Every time I sign the thing, I only see preuniors and me. I mean, there might be a couple other. What about Castleton Downtown?
They used to here at the corners, but they haven't in a long time.
So it's just Joe now?
It's just you and preuniors.
I think so, yeah.
And preuniors.
Any other questions for, for Joe? Joe, will the cost still be there? The credit card fee?
What do you mean?
Well, if you get your five percent, you and preuniors get your five percent.
Discount from the town. Then we're not losing any more money.
And who will pay the credit card fee?
I always pay the credit card fee. I don't pass that along to anybody, no matter what.
Boy, I know you pay it. But if you get five percent, is it going to cost the town any money?
Well, the town's going to lose two and a half percent.
Pardon?
The town's going to lose two and a half percent on the sale of the tickets.
It's probably, how much, hey, the, how many, how much dollars per year in tickets do you sell?
I get maybe tickets monthly and every time I go, it's like five or six hundred dollars that I purchase.
So we're talking two and a half percent of that?
Yeah. And I don't know, I don't know how many premier sells. I know that you guys sell them at the transfer station. I think you charge the consumer a convenience fee.
They do.
Yeah, so they, they're charging the fee to the consumer. So if someone's buying stickers at the transfer station, they'd be better off buying them from me. But the town's going to lose two and a half percent. I don't know how, I don't know who sells the most, if it's me or preuniors or the town.
Probably the town.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, I think we have a motion, correct?
We do.
And a second? Joe?
Me.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. Well, just at the right time. Take care and have a good night.
Did it affect you today then? Affect you today? Affect you today?
I don't see why not.
Is that the intent of your motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to fence bid, fence bid for Crystal Beach, Martha Clifford.
One more paper to hand out to the select board correspondents from Middlebury Fence, talking about the gate, gate types. I needed clarification, so I thought you might as well have the same information.
Joe?
I, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. I don't think there were any images, Martha, associated with the Pratiko bid, correct?
No, he didn't send any.
Middlebury Fence provided two images. And did you label these?
Okay. The, the, your, that one is the, this candle lever fence that, or gate that he talked about. Because they, it sits on the inner here and it slides above the ground like that. That is just a picture of the chain gate.
Okay. Secondly, Pratiko talked about installing three hundred and two feet of five-foot-high chain link fence. And Middlebury talked about two hundred and twenty-five linear feet.
Well, I also noticed that. And the only, the only explanation that I can give you at this point would be that there, they had to stop measuring after they came over the covert and hitched it to the existing fence. And then there was a space up above closer to the main gate that we wanted to tie in there. And possibly they went, they didn't stop at the same place. You know, I, I asked them to stop a little bit behind the, the bushes that we have. But neither one of them say exactly how far behind the bushes they went.
So third point is that, I, I guess I'm not enthusiastic about the Middlebury Fence proposal to just drive posts into the ground.
That was also my concern.
And can you tell me what kind of gate Pratiko is talking about? I know there are two proposals, one for a candle lever gate and the other for a slider gate. You're asking for us to support the slider gate proposal?
Well, with this new information, I, I have to be honest that if, if there's an issue with snow buildup and everything, it would be, it would be difficult, you know, maybe to get in to, to that north entrance if there's a lot of snow there. But the, the other, the, the bid that does the double drive gate, the sixteen, sixteen, three ninety bid, that is a, it's a swing gate like that. And it's, it's, it's not solid, but there's fencing in it. It's not like, it's not like anything that anybody can crawl through or crawl under.
But, but doesn't anything that has to swing also run into the problems of snow accumulation?
Well, going this way, I think, would be less of an issue than trying to push the gate this way, twenty-two feet in the snow. That would just be my opinion.
Do we need to even open the gate in this room?
Should be, well, they, they have to be able to get into that entrance anyway all winter because the substation's there.
Oh, okay.
So finally, Pratiko themselves say we don't need a slider gate. But that's what you're recommending to us. Why is that?
Because I thought it would be the, the best, best fit for that particular, for, for our purposes, for opening and closing it. It just seemed a little bit less maintenance, I guess, for, less, less for the maintenance to do, less work.
But a slider gate is not a candle levered gate?
A slider gate? I'm not sure because they are all called candle lever gates. When I looked online, there were fifteen, fifteen different. But the Middlebury Fence, when he got back to me, he was still calling it a candle lever gate. But it, it was up on rollers this way. But my understanding of a candle lever gate is that it goes like French doors. No?
I would not think so.
No?
What I know about Frank Lloyd Wright's candle lever designs, it, it would be like what's shown here. That is, the, this section of the, of the gate would not be supported. It would accept by the physics that allows this part to hold that part up. I, I think the biggest concern I have, Mr. Chairman, is the discrepancy in the linear feet of the two leading proposals. And I think we should get that clarified before we act on this. But I, I mean, maybe others feel differently.
How does the rest of the board feel?
Well, I do agree with Mr. Mark's questions and our confusion about what exactly, a double drive gate is just a bypassing gate? Like a set of French doors?
A double drive gate is, is a gate that, that.
Just swings.
Opens like that.
Just swings, okay.
And may be suspended on wheels at, at one end.
It could be, yes, because I, I've seen that before.
Okay, is it possible to get that information for our next meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
I do know that both of these companies are stocking eight weeks out when I had the estimate done. So that's another thing we might, we might consider. So I will, I will contact one of them or both of them. And if they want to come back out and remeasure, and then we'll, we'll bring it into you. Yes?
Okay. Joe, uh, Mike?
I, just on a statement, that the double drive gates at that location, because the driveway falls away, as you open that gate, it's going to get, the ground is going to keep falling away from it. And they tend to, those double drive gates, like, that's why we got away from it at the, the one on the exit of the transfer station. Or I want to get to the rollers because they start sagging. And then all of a sudden, they're, they're sagged down and it just, just gravity wears, works on the posts. And I, I think the best one there is going to be some kind of a roller, candle lever, or something that's, you can slide back and forth. If the, if the wastewater crew has to get in there, they're, they're going to have to maybe clear snow out of the way. But they, they do it at their own gate. So I don't think that's a, should be a showstopper. But I don't, I think the double drive gates are, are going to be problematic over time versus the, something that's on a slider.
Okay. Yes, Joe?
Just a final point. In order to be able to consider these proposals as, you know, apples and apples, I'd be interested in knowing what Middlebury Fence's bid would be if they put their posts in cement instead of just driving them into the ground.
If they do, what?
Put their posts.
Into cement.
Okay. Yeah, just for clarity, so that everyone's on the same page here. I think that we, I think we're all agreeing now at this point to not do a double drive gate. And so a slider or a candle lever is the same thing, I think. I don't see, I think that's just a, it's the same animal with a different name.
Yeah.
So if you can get the same length of fence and the same methodology in setting the posts from both vendors, then we'll be happy to make a decision.
All right.
Does that make sense, Joe?
That sounds great. Anything else? Mary Lee, anything else? No? Okay, thanks, Martha. Moving on to recreation update. We have the information from Bo.
Bo's online as well.
Okay, Bo.
Yeah, ready to chime in with the rec director report. We just closed out the summer officially, so I'll report on August as well as just a bird's eye view on how the summer went. So for, for adult rec, just starting at the top of the column there. We, you might remember, we stopped the indoor walking program, the rec indoor walking program over the summer because it just kind of trickled down into no attendance, which wasn't any, no harm done because we were just having it co-occur with any time pickleball sessions were happening. So we would just get maximum use of the building. So that stopped in this summer, but then in August, we repicked up, we picked up something similar to that. But it's actually through the Arthretis Foundation and the Castleton Community Center. So they're, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday now, they're using the rec center to do their Walk With Ease program, which is similar to the indoor walking program that we had before. But I would say quite a bit more, like, there's more, there's more of an education component with it, more of a community building component with it. So it's, it's like indoor walking plus. That's going to be continuing through October. And then we also continued with five sections of indoor pickleball, of pickup pickleball. We had some lower attendance this August compared to June and July because we had a lot of folks traveling. But you'll get to see in just a little bit how successful the pickleball program has been over the summer. But moving on real quick, we also had yoga offered, which had been offered previously in the summer as a rec program. We have a, a local yoga instructor, Kelsey Butler. And originally, she was willing to, to join as a volunteer and just kind of get yoga introduced to the community through the rec center there. And since then, we, in August officially transferred that from like a rec program to actually a facility rental. So now, now Kelsey Butler is, she's offering this, this instruction as like a private, private offering. So it's not a rec program anymore, but it is a room rental, which I, I, I was pretty heartened by because on, on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, we have really a pretty good example of the community of like the rec center alive and buzzing. Because we've got one rec program, one facility rental, and one community partner, all active that same morning. And so the parking lot's really full. People are saying, hey, what are you here for? What are you here for? I'm here for this, I'm here for that, all cool. So it's just a really great vibe in the building. And I would definitely welcome anyone to come visit Monday, Wednesday, or Friday mornings, especially Wednesday mornings. But anyway, keep on going on here. So we had about a hundred thirty-six rec participants, like I said, plus one community partner and one facility rental, which is, it's, it's, it's looking to be ongoing, which is, which is awesome. Moving down to youth rec, we discontinued the open studio. I think I might have mentioned the last rec report last month that when we started charging. charging, no one showed up. And it's okay, so we do, we just kind of live and learn, and it might have been conflicting schedules, but it could have also been that people aren't willing to pay for that, and that's all right. Youth soccer registrations, they opened up in August as well. They just, just barely closed, so we haven't quite had any practices yet, but that's actually starting this Thursday. And finally, the summer adventure camp, which was a six-week-long program that wrapped up in August as well, that had about fifty campers per week, so all in for the month of August, uh, we had about a hundred youth rec participants, or like visitors, I would say, um, because I didn't count any of the soccer, I didn't count any of the soccer registrations or anything, because they haven't like interacted with us yet, they've just registered. Moving down to community support events, we had the fire department do some training in here. It's always really cool when they do that, because it's like make-believe intense, but there's, you know, you know, they're, they're pretending there's a fire, there's not really a fire, but you get to hear all the sound effects as if there is. So anyway, they had a, they had a training here, uh, set up the building as if it were an apartment, and did their thing. We were also the rain location for the library's drum circle, and it did in fact rain, so they came on over and did the drum circle, uh, in their, in, in here at rec. I mentioned before, we have now the, the Kelsey Butler Flow Yoga Program happening as a facility rental. I mentioned already the Walk With Ease program that's happening, uh, with the Castleton Community Senior Center. And finally, uh, we are still having the Castleton Garden Club meetings, although they're, they're really pretty intimate right now. So maybe that'll, I, I'm not sure if that'll grow, or if that'll maintain, or if it'll kind of go to sleep over the winter and then come alive again in the spring, but, um, but they, they are the ones that we should tip our hats to for the, for the park and ride beautification project there. Meetings attended, uh, one staff meeting, two rec mission meetings, library meetings, select board meetings, and community board meetings, those ones have been mostly soccer-related. Now I'm gonna share, oh, I forgot to mention, uh, well, I forgot to mention the specific fees associated with some of these programs. Mostly, we were collecting fees from pickleball, uh, the summer camp programs, youth, uh, soccer right now, and, uh, and then just the facility fee, the facility rental fee, which is just a one-time, uh, fee per month. But then, you flip over, and now I realize that I, I printed out one out of two of the sheets in the Excel spreadsheet, so I think I printed out only the revenue sheet, and you're, and you're missing the expenses sheet as well. I can share my screen, though. But if you look at the color, kind of color-coded revenue, the, uh, facility rental up, up at the very top, it, it outlines the two rentals we had over the summer, the first month of, uh, the August, uh, room rental there for yoga, as well as the basketball camps that occurred the month before, uh, then they rented out the gym. So that brought us in, those two reservations brought us in, uh, six hundred thirty-eight dollars. And now moving down to the green block, we see how much we were able to generate from, from pickleball throughout the summer, which is about at a thousand, a little over a thousand three hundred dollars. And so I, I'm quite heartened by that, because it, it requires very little investment, um, other than initially buying the nets, which are a good investment, they, they stand the test of time and everything. The one thing we have to keep buying every now and then are pickleballs, because they walk them and they crack them. Uh, they're, they're, they're really good, they're really good at pickleball, obviously, so. Moving down, we see the revenue brought in from summer camp, uh, summer adventure camp, I should specify, and then down below, uh, revenue from soccer registration so far. Just below that, you'll also see the revenue that came in from our other summer camp programs, the youth sailing and youth tennis. Let's see, oh, right, I flipped the page, but you guys don't have this page, so I'm just going over to my computer screen now, and see if I can share my screen.
Thank you, Bo. The board have any questions for, did the board have any questions for Bo?
I was just gonna make a comment that I, I think I've been provided with, uh, a report on expenditures.
So have I.
Oh, you were, oh, good, good, okay, I think I might have just not printed myself out a copy then. Do you also, do you all have an expenditure sheet as well?
I do.
Good, good. I wouldn't have thought twice if I accidentally missed that, but I'm glad you have it.
Any other questions for Bo?
I'm all set.
All set? Joe?
Just, uh, one, Mr. Chairman. Bo, the, uh, I, I know something about the youth sailing, uh, procedures, so I know that we, uh, had families sign waiver forms. Is that a general practice in the programs that, that we're hosting?
Yes, all of them.
And does that, that includes the yoga, even though that's probably one of the least liability-related, including
Yeah, so
The facility rental, uh, programs?
Right, so when the yoga was occurring as a rec program, I had everyone individually signing their, their waivers, um, and I was personally responsible for catching those upon arrival. Now, the way the contract is spelled out is, um, the, the instructor is able to, like, they collect the, they collect the waivers for all of their participants, and that waives them having to have, uh, insurance. If they, if they had insurance, for example, um, they could just provide proof of insurance, but, uh, instead of doing that, we're allowing them to collect the waivers, uh, and, and that waiver has spelled out that Castleton Rec and all of its departments, actually, the waiver itself is very similar to the waiver that we use anyway. Basically, the responsibility of collecting the signature now goes to the instructor. That's basically the change, but the waiver is still collecting.
Any other questions, Joe?
No. Mary Jovey has a question.
Bo, Dick, just a second, let me, let me get to the board, and I'll get to you.
Sorry, Mary, I'm all set.
You're all set? Mary Lee?
I have one question. Way up at the top, under adult, um, recreation, um, way over to the fees charge, your first blank said no, none, and then it goes residents ten dollars a month or past five dollars a day, and then it says non-resident plus two. Why would non-resident be less than resident?
Oh, good question. It's plus two in addition to the, the normal resident fee. So the ten dollar a month pass for a non-resident would become twelve, or the five dollar day pass would become seven.
Thank you.
Any other board questions? Mike?
I'm on the board.
Larry? Mary Drouzy?
Okay, um, just for those of us that don't have the handout, um, or on Zoom, can, Bo, can you give us the total of the revenue and the total of the spending?
Uh, I can do you quick calculations.
Oh, it's not totaled on the sheet?
Uh, the sum total of everything all in is not, but I have it categorized, okay, since
You just started to mention some, then stopped mentioning how much you were bringing in.
Anything else?
Last year.
I'd just make a suggestion that, uh, the town manager add Bo's report to the information on this, uh, select board meeting, so it's available to Mary and all others.
Okay. I don't believe that's happening right now.
Mike, you have something, or no?
I just had a question, uh, under the expenses, because under revenue, the, what's being, the, the fees and stuff for the summer camp, is, there's an expense that goes along with summer camp, too, are, are, are those listed in, I don't see them in here, are they listed in, under your expenses?
Um, the expenses, I believe they were already, um, so a lot of the big purchases for summer camp, like, uh, renting the pool, or buses, or, um, like, supplies, things like that, a lot of those purchases were made before June, so just, I was just doing a three-month lookback, um, so I don't have those, I don't have those factored in here, just because, yeah, I guess I was just looking at the financials for the last three months. Yeah, and that, that, the purchase orders and such would have been put in before June, but you're absolutely right, that that should be taken into consideration, and actually, that's what I was about to say in response to Mary, Mary's question as well, um, because I can sum up all of these, these categories here, and it's gonna seem like a really large number, and I would say, like, if you're looking at, for example, pickleball, pickleball really generated for us, but then if you look at, for example, at the very bottom, we have youth tennis, and it, it's, it shows that we have six fifty in revenue there, um, but we actually ended up paying six hundred dollars back to U S T, U S T A, United States Tennis Association. Yeah, we, we paid them back sixty dollars per, uh, sixty-five dollar registration, um, and, and it's worth it, because, you know, they buy the rackets, they do, they, they do a really awesome job, and they set us up for a program without a lot of effort, um, but that is just, also just note that we're not taking home most of that six fifty there.
Okay, thank you, Bo.
I just wanna make a comment that if we're, I think we're paying wages for the, it's coming out of the rec budget, the wages for the, the counselors for the camps, and any, like, um, referees or anything, for any of the other stuff, that, would that be considered expenses?
Yes, but I thought that that kind of expense wasn't supposed to be included in this report, like personnel and such.
Okay, I, I don't, I, I guess I didn't make that rule on that, but I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify that, um, that it's not in there, but it's, and they're not in there by mistake, it's on purpose then, because, because you weren't asked to do it, basically. Okay?
Okay, anything else? If not, let's move on. Chief, you're finally up.
You've been very patient.
No, it's all good, it's all good, real happy.
That's just Castle, just updated, uh, that last page.
Okay. Let's talk about August. Y'all got the report for August, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's call for calls of service. Uh, August was a busy month, uh, for us, even though calls only went up from five seventeen to five thirty-eight, uh, from July to August. It was the, what I call quality of calls, because if you look under the arrest, uh, we went from five in July to twenty-three in August. A huge jump. I don't know what was going on with the water, uh, but we were straight out, and pretty serious stuff, too, it wasn't just, uh, suspended licenses. It's been a hectic summer, overall, anyway, uh, we've seen increases in lots of things. So any questions on the service calls? Any questions on the arrest piece? And, and the back on the narratives, it breaks down some of those, why we went up so much. We also didn't list, well, we did list the one for the stolen vehicle that ended up , uh, right, right by Tom's house, over unstable, did you hear about all that?
Yeah, and they took the
And they end up taking the, uh
Paver truck, too.
Yep, took, uh, which got recovered in New York that weekend, they end up taking, um, Wilks pickup truck, that was left running.
There we are, great. Okay. We're gonna get started?
Hey, can you get, you're, you're not muted, please mute yourself. Sounds like a different meeting. And, um, that was recovered, he ended up getting arrested, he had warrants for him, he was actually a, a escaped felon from, on parole, stolen license plate, so, you know, thank God, it's, that's all that happened that night, could have been a lot worse. So on the arrest piece, I'm gonna go right past the traffic violations and kind of get into the narrative on some of the stuff that we talked about. August, uh, more calls to service at Castle, and because obviously the, the university's in session, so, and those directed patrols are really sitting on Main Street, or sitting on Mechanic Street, or standing on Exit Five, Exit Five down there is the, uh, the place where the kids have been going this, so far, this early fall. All right, so, talked about that, you know, it was a busy month. Uh, we have increased this, throughout this whole summer, areas such as the park and ride, Crystal Beach, Green Dump, which is over on Creek Road. One of the things that I, I put out to the office was basically a zero tolerance at nighttime. If anybody's parked over in Green Dump, they're asked to move unless they're, they're in some kind of criminal activity, then we arrest them, or, and nobody in the nighttime on the park and ride. And we've actually towed five or six vehicles a summer from those, those areas, uh, unattended. We find out if we don't do that, then things start happening, um, and that's fully when the confines and the ordinance and, uh, the laws, when it comes to those two spots. Resident checks, we're always doing those, still doing the foot patrols, um, we talked about the traffic stops that we had more in August. What we did notice that, uh, on North Road, uh, twenty-five vehicles were stopped on North Road, several vehicles were operating in excess of seventy, seventy miles an hour. We just got two on Main Street last week at sixty-two at night. So, um, a matter of fact, that one arrest where it talks about the distribution and, felony amount of cannabis, uh, that was based on a speed violation. The guy, it was reported a person was driving a certain vehicle so many times across this area, and that's when Officer Pietek, uh, stopped him and then came up with that arrest, which turned into a search warrant, which turned into a bunch of stuff. So it's been a busy week when it comes to, or a busy month for that, DOIs, um, we were up. I think we had, uh, three, uh, one drug and two alcohol. We had a, they, they had a situation, uh, there was a big fight at a wedding at the lodge, uh, which one person did get arrested and taken out, and they do have security there, too.
Wasn't the groom, was it?
No, it was somebody else, it's, yeah. And then they've been watching the four corners for the traffic light pattern going flashing red, they've made a few of those stops there. We got, still got two carts out, one on Creek Road, which I'm probably gonna take out before the end of September, and we got one way over West Castleton, we moved out above Moscow Road, we've had that, had that out there for two months, they've really appreciated it, we're gonna get that out of there. TSA fingerprinting services going like crazy, probably averaging thirty-eight people on a Wednesday, so it's kind of crazy. I think that covers about everything. Any questions? I know I kind of went pretty fast, but it was in the, it was in the
Mary Lee?
Yes, Mary Lee?
What about our homeless person behind the Ca- Castleton Village School?
Well, we, we can't confirm that, I don't believe they are homeless.
Oh, okay.
When, uh, the, the neighbor said they, they, their, their motion lights keep coming on from, uh, the back and finding, those tables have been there since the school was there. I really think it's students that are coming over, maybe at night, going back there, parking, there's nobody in the shed, because there's equipment in there, and there's nobody, it looks like it's been in there, just, Bo, you on? No. I didn't, I should probably mention to Bo, it probably should lock that shed, it's not locked.
We didn't have anything in there.
Huh?
Nothing was empty.
Well, it had basketballs and stuff in there, but
It was ours.
Yeah, I don't believe there's homeless, and plus I fished that whole back stream this summer, like, three times, I've walked up and down, I hadn't seen any signs. Usually when you fish these streams, you find a couple of shaky people down there, milling about, the streams that I fished, so I have not seen anything. Matter of fact, earlier in the summer, someone said someone was hanging down by Dewey Field, so, I, I parked down there, went through the whole buildings, Bo came down, didn't look like anybody was living in anything, because they're all locked, so I can't confirm that, I don't believe there is. Doesn't mean there may have been a transient, because we've seen a lot of transient movement going back and forth.
Any other questions?
Just one, quick one. On a
Um, on a calls to Castleton University, you had, what is a social media complaint?
It circled that.
Oh. I didn't understand what that was. That is basically somebody sending private body pictures out and got defrauded. You know what I mean?
No.
Okay, so basically, they meet somebody online, they say, hey, send me a couple pics, they send the wrong body part pics, they then blackmail them, said, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna take those pictures and put them all over Facebook and you have to give me this much money. Oh, okay. That kinda thing.
So this is a referral from the university, uh, rather than handling it internally as...
Yeah, I don't know if they, they could handle that internally.
I would hope not.
So some of those, see, and I've had a few of these since I've been here. It's a huge embarrassment piece. I mean, there's no question about it. We go through it with them, but the process needs to happen and go from there.
But the complaint comes from?
Comes from the student.
Correct. Correct.
Anything else for Peter?
As you say.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe.
The quality of your work is.
It's crazy, it's crazy. Yes, Mike?
I don't think people are always how much office time comes along with those arrests, the paperwork and the investigation, the follow-up. So if they don't see them out in the road twenty-four seven, there's probably a reason why.
Well, plus the other thing, we have to, we're picking up the, I've got a sexual assault case. We've gotta pick up the adult sexual assaults because CFAC can't, can't keep up, they're just doing the kids. So I had, I've, I've got a case where I brought somebody over there to use their facility and wanted investigators, so I gotta finish it out. So, I mean, there's, everybody's feeling, everybody's kinda feeling the crunch and it's not like it used to be.
A discussion today with a, with an employee that they were finding those cannabis glass vials out behind the village school. Did you happen to come across those?
I didn't see any when I checked last week.
Okay.
But I'll go, I'll check tomorrow, but.
Are the officers making a swing through there at night?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we, we talked about it, um, the ones that are working on the weekends.
Just, just to, to, the concerned citizen, that's all.
Yeah, no, no, I, I totally understand.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Stay right there for the noise ordinance.
Yes.
I have one more question for Pete.
Yes, sir.
Um, how are you looking for staffing now?
Well, we, Ed is gonna be out until he's on PT. Hopefully I can get him on light duty, which is not gonna be a whole lot, uh, because I really don't have a full-time light duty position. And October first, I told him, had a letter from his doctor, I told him he needs to change that when he passes PT in the end of, uh, September, he'll, he put May, I want can, not the word May, come back full duty, so, or light duty, so, um, he's in the process, he feels good. Um, he's on workman's comp, it's a long process. I can't push any more than that. Nodges, of course, nodges back. But he goes to the academy in February for sixteen weeks. So we're gonna be full and then lose, well, that's the price you pay. Josh is working out great.
Good.
Awesome, doing a really good job. And it's Piatake, P I A T E K.
Okay, are we ready for the noise ordinance, Peter? I assume what we have is the existing copy?
Yeah, did you, who gave that to you?
Karen, bring them out.
Okay. So, this has been an issue for, it's not just here, but all sorts of places. So I did quite a bit of research. I didn't, obviously, I covered probably about four, four Vermont towns, um, Rutland, Wallingford, Burlington and Woodstock. Woodstock, 'cause I knew, because I came from there, because they had a pretty good ordinance. And I checked, like, Boston, I checked for cities or towns that had actual decibels, DBAs, uh, ratings, uh, meters for, so they can, what's reasonable, what's not reasonable. So, all right. So after going through these, I, I don't believe our, our ordinance is horrible by any means. Um, I think it was well put together. I would add some things to it. I still think that there's certain areas in the town where, like, everybody has the towns, or everybody, all the ordinances I've looked at have towns from twenty-three-hundred to oh-seven-hundred is, that's, that's the strict, that's the strict time where they don't allow anything. Matter of fact, one city has anything that's even above fifty decibels, which is, which is, um, I'm not to give you guys, I didn't get it, the, the ratings. I probably left it on my, on my desk. Uh, fifty decibels is, is good. Seventy is the, is the, what they would call the, the top of the decibel rating in order for, if you listen, if you, if anything above seventy decibels for more than an hour, it can affect your hearing. Like everything else above that, which covers about everything, from lawnmowers to leaf blowers to chainsaws to any kind of construction equipment, even loud mufflers. So, but, there's only two of them that I checked that had actual readings based on those time periods. So, um, Boston had one where from, from twenty-three-hundred to oh-seven, from eleven PM to seven AM, nothing could be above fifty. From seven AM to any other time, it was seventy. Which means it's low at night because everybody's sleeping, you know, you give, you give it twenty during the day. So, you can't put everything in there because you got construction. So construct, construction ordinance is, is good, that what we put in here for the timeframe, um, nine PM to seven AM, some, one town had it at six-thirty, but I think seven AM is good. Uh, that includes everything from the quarries. I've had complaints where people were starting to work, even at the quarry, um, before seven o'clock. So, those are things, and I talked to the owner about that and they said, no, we weren't doing that. So, um, those are things that people will let me know about. Social events, that's the key. So originally, in history, two thousand nine, I believe that ordinance was adopted, right?
Yeah, I think.
Was it oh-nine or was it ten?
Yeah, oh-nine.
Yeah, it was oh-nine. Then I think sixty days, then I think in two thousand ten, it actually became active because that was in December.
Correct.
So, it came out because of, because of off-campus housing, you know, for the students. And we handle that pretty good. Civil process goes through the issue bureau, uh, we have fines up to five hundred dollars, which everybody has the same thing, kind of same progressive scale. Everybody has a, some, some goes, some start out at like a hundred and fifty and then go to five hundred. We don't. We go to fifty and then it goes up. The thing that, the, the complaints that we were getting from Pine Street with that, and I just wanna, this is what kinda initiated this whole process, is really distance. Let's say that we had a decibel rating. Let's say we had it at nighttime as, as seventy. That means from, from the point of where that sound is to when it first gets to a public access area, which would be the sidewalk or the street, until it hits that property is when you measure that, you measure that. And seventy is not that high. Mr. Moniz had contacted me a couple of weeks ago, they all got downloaded apps on their phones over there. So they, there was a, there was an event going on and he said it was like a fifty. It's reasonable, he said, I, I could deal with that. But don't forget, his residence is right behind, really it busts that property. And of course, when you have things outside. What San Ho- San Jose does, which I like, but I think it's gonna, it's, we don't have the infrastructure for it, is permitting for any kind of outdoor noise activity where they give, they actually have a rating where you would, this is what you, this is what you can't go over. And if you go over, you can get fined, you can get whatever. They have to pay for, if there's any police involved and so on and so on. It can put all the expenses on whoever that private entity is. So going back to our ordinance, um, I haven't totally, uh, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't change, I wouldn't change anything. The only thing that I'd liked with some of these other ones they had, I'd, I'd put some definitions in here. I think we could probably get a little more detail, okay? Which we don't really have in here. We don't have definitions. What is reasonable? What's reasonable? What's a reasonable sound?
I, I think it's a word we don't wanna use in our policy.
I know, that's what I'm saying. So that's why they started doing the decibel readings and trying to come up with some, what, what's reasonable to me may not be reasonable to somebody else. Some people are, are less tolerant of noises, other people can go through it. Now, why don't I hear complaints from, there's a lot of, uh, look, you, why don't I hear complaints from you, Joe, from noise down there during the spring?
I'm losing my hearing.
Maybe that's why. Maybe it was above seventy all those years and all that noise. So there's some people that tolerate some more. Does it make it fair now? So I think the language, some of that's gotta be changed and I would be more, um, and I haven't put everything in there, I've just kinda marked down things that I would change. So I'd like to come back with a draft of a lawyer to look at and make sure we're all good. And I've also got, I printed out any kind of noise, noise statute that we had in the state, which isn't that much. It's actually pretty weak, the noise in the nighttime. We don't even use that. Good foundation, reasonable, what's reasonable mean? I think we need to define that. Um, I think we need to add, like, break it down to more in a commercial industrial property, um, background level. What's, emergency work is an exemption. Like if you had, if you had something happen at night and you, or you got a fire department and things are going, you got excavators, we had these fires, that's different. I think that those things have to be in place. Kinda everything, there's a lot, there's a lot going on here. I got so much stuff here. Uh, Burlington, um, they really break it down and they put some, some of it on the landlords. Certain things. And they have to get permits for parties, which I don't think we're in the business of doing. Questions?
So you'll come back with a, a draft, Peter?
I wanna come back with a draft. I really wanted it. I was, I was thinking somebody else is gonna be here, so.
It's reasonable, as is noise.
Yeah, yeah. Comments or questions that you guys thought about it? What about Dick? What about?
Well, Joe can go first, he had his hand up for me.
So, uh, I, speaking personally, I, I really think that, uh, we either need to have a very firm and clear definition of unreasonable or not use the word at all.
You got, we gotta have some type of standard. And that's what the towns and cities are all, they're, because when you go to a court, what's, what's considered unreasonable? Or, okay, forget all the word, what's too loud?
Right, and I think that.
See what I'm saying?
I think that the, the decibel, by the way, I've been measuring the decibels on your speaking this, in the last ten minutes.
How much was it?
Um, I wrote it right here. Fifty-four to sixty-two.
That's, that's, yeah, that's conversation.
You have a loud voice.
I do, but that's conversation. So, uh, I'd like, I'd like, if somebody wants to work with me and I can show you, I can get copies of some of these ones, like, there's a couple of orders here I think are really well put together. I think overall, if we have a good ordinance, I just think we need to, we need to, we need to streamline it in a, in a sense of, get more, uh, have more definitions defining what is reasonable, what's not. Be a little more specific on the exceptions that, which we don't have.
So, uh, I'd be willing to work with you if.
Okay, yeah, and I, and I have your email and I'll just send you, I'll send you the stuff that I got. Take a look at it. And, um, I've already started a draft, not revamping everything, just basically taking it and just adding some stuff in it.
I also wanted to comment.
Because it's a big issue.
On the second paragraph under section six, um, I don't really understand that. A civil penalty of not more than a hundred fifty dollars per violation, paren's note maybe up to five hundred per violation. Doesn't sound like we're going to assign that, so I, I, I don't know why we have that parenthetical comment. Uh, may be imposed. And then I don't, particularly don't understand the next part, the waiver fee.
All right, so that's why that, that happens. So if you look on, which it doesn't have it, and this, in this particular thing, if you go, I gotta find it. And one of these, one of these sections had it really spelled out, um, oh, it was the dog one. On the dog ordinance, on, on the back of the, uh, on the, um, one of the sections in the very back, the appendix, it breaks down into a category. It gives waiver costs versus like fifty or a hundred and fifty. We have that same option. Like, if I write a speeding ticket to Mary Lee tomorrow, because she races down Sand Hill.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. If I give her a ticket, let's say for ten over, I know that's a hundred and five dollars, but my range of putting a ticket is forty-seven to whatever that maxes. I could write her a ticket for forty-seven and that's only the waiver fee. That's what that means. That fifty dollars is only the waiver fee. To, to us.
But in, in this case, it, it's not a judgment call by the officer, but it, it's a specific affirmative statement, the waiver fee shall be. So you're saying that it could be a hundred fifty?
Correct.
Or we can.
No, that's a discretion. We can use that.
I, I understand, uh, it, I think it, we ought to write this so that everyone understands.
I agree.
Without your clarification, I didn't know what that.
Yes, yes, I, I, no, I agree with that. I think that is confusing. Um, I don't know who did that, but I agree with you. So that's something that, I'll have to pull the dog ordinance out because I don't have, I have the other ones in here. Spells it out a little better.
Okay.
Colms, you got a question?
Okay, so you're gonna work with Joe?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds great.
Yeah, you did have a question.
Um, just a quick thing, um, on section three and under prohibition, that the, the phrase shall not be deemed to be exclusive needs to stay. That gives you the ability to use a little judgment. And the other thing I, I think that in some cases, section A and, or section three A has been misinterpreted to mean that they can make as much noise as they would like between seven AM and eleven PM. But I don't believe that's the intent of the ordinance because it says in the same sentence or in such a manner as to unreasonably disturb the peace, quiet or comfort of the public. And once again, we have to define what unreasonable is. So, um, I think that when someone interprets this ordinance as it exists now, that, that as much noise is, or as, as much volume as wants to be created between seven AM and eleven PM is not accurate. There has to be a limit.
Correct.
So, um, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Okay, anything else from Mike, or from Peter? Thanks a lot, Peter, appreciate it. Moving on. Next item, park and ride grant, program application. Mike, you have a few words on that?
A few, that's the key word, Mr. John. Um, so the, the stuff that, this, this grant is a twenty percent match grant, uh, there's only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out there from, available for all, anybody applying for it. We meet all the criteria, every, everything on there, um, we meet, um, we own it, uh, proximity of US four, there's a public transportation route nearby because of the buses that comes in there. We meet the proposed lot size, um, it can, it can be used year-round. So the things I'm looking at there is updating signage, and if anybody's, is a business or they've looked at the cost of signs lately, I can show you the bill we just received for what we picked up. It's just crazy right now what a sign costs. And depending on the size of it, obviously, but. The asphalt surface, um, it's, we, I did the crack sealing and seal coating and line striping out it this year, but it's getting pretty broken up in some of those places on there. So look at the asphalt surface. The bus shelter, um, it's, if, if you wanna take a ride down there and look at it, it's get, it's old and it's getting pretty beat up. Look at replacing that, um, with something that can also get people more out of the wind. The line markings, and I, I put drainage on there and it's not really, the drainage is around the, the entrances, it's just, it's not really drainage work so much as it's probably gravel work to fill the holes in and make sure that we, maybe put something in place where people aren't cutting across the lawn and causing more damage and then it fills in with water and turns into a mud bath. So that, we're looking at probably ten to, ten to fifteen thousand dollars, um, and the town share of that would be anywhere from two thousand to three thousand, which is built into the maintenance of the park and ride, uh, in the, in the town land's budget. So it's not a stretch by any means to, uh, have the funding for it. So I'm just looking at the board to approve me to apply for it. looking at the board to approve me to apply for it, um, and we'll see if we can even get approved, but.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we instruct Mike to apply for this grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just a comment, the, uh, the email that we got, um, Mike says, maintenance of existing lots is not an eligible activity under this program.
So, they're not going to pay us to plow it and, and do those type of things, but one of the things that is, going back farther into this, asphalt surfacing is, oh, so.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
If not, all those in favor of authorizing Mike to apply for it indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, didn't hear any. Okay. Generator for the town office bid award. Mike?
We solicited bids, um, and the only one that come back of the three that we solicited, the, the three we solicit are the ones that, are the ones that reply to us, uh, historically, we don't get replies from quite a few, um, so the one we got back from Fowler Services, and this is for an emergency standby generator with automatic transfer switch, that would be turnkey for the town office, and I'll, I'll state that, in some of the encumbrances the board has approved over the last couple of years, that there's money that's been carried forward with that stuff, and there's money in the operating budget for it, but looking at what it came in at, there's, there is a shortfall, it's a ten, ten grand is the, and, if you, I don't know if you can recall, some of the generator purchases that the board approved for the pump stations or for, uh, the Legion, but ten thousand dollars to put in, uh, this generator turnkey is like, that's the best price I've, I was shocked when I saw that price, and, so, is that, I'm not saying that to try to sway your decision so much as, I'm just saying I'm shocked that it, to have a generator that would power everything in that building with an automatic transfer switch installed for ten grand, um, but we're short, we're short money on it and, um, that, that would be the downfall, the downside to it, because we're to rob Peter to pay Paul, I guess, um, because we're about four grand short right now.
Anything else on this? If not, is there a motion?
Well, I guess I'm, um, this is the question the chairman usually asks, where's the money coming from, and the answer is, we have a sixty percent of it.
Peter to pay Paul, he said.
Yeah. Will that be possible? In the overall scheme of the budget, yes, so what, just, I'd overspend the, the maintenance or the, uh, other purchase services or improvements other than buildings on the town office to do this. But am I confident that at the end of the year, based on historical data, that, uh, four thousand dollars would, would be absorbed? Absolutely.
Any other questions for Mike?
Yes, I'm confused. You got, in this first part, you've got a grant total of ten thousand, uh, seventeen dollars and eighty-seven cents. And over here, we've got seven thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-seven cents. What's the difference?
He added in the labor materials to install the two-hundred amp automatic transfer switch, was for twenty-one hundred, um, that's where the two, he had the two together to come up to ten thousand. Because, because he had, it, it's a subcontractor that, Fowler Services can't do the automatic transfer switch and, and hooking into the, the panel box, so it's, uh, was outsourced or subcontracted, so he had to account for that as part of his bid.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Well, I will, can I just, this is, this is the last building that we'll have besides the beach, and the library, and CBS, so those three buildings don't have backup power, but all the main functions of our town, the essential functions, would be covered by emergency backup power.
Okay. Now, was there a motion?
I would move that we authorize the town manager to sign contractual agreement with Fowler Services for the purchase and installation of an emergency standby generator with automatic transfer switch.
Want to put the amount in there, Joe?
For a total not to exceed ten thousand seventeen dollars and how many cents?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, passes. Approved purchase of De Ponte, Superditch Bank Flail Mower from Salem Farm Supply. Yes, Mike?
So, this has been probably two years in the, in the making as far as getting it to the board. We, as you know, if you probably drive around town, we're struggling to keep up with the roadside mowing, I don't think that's a secret, um, a couple of different issues, one is that damn New Holland tractor that we have, the, the over-the-rail mower, and the tractor has had so many problems that we're following, we fall behind because the thing's in the shop more than it's on the road, and it also wasn't really designed to mow roadside, because the arm has to be all the way in next to the tractor, and it's just, it was really designed to be reached out over the banks, so it has a purpose, um, but not, it really isn't designed for close-up mowing beside the road. So we had the Kubota, um, we tried a sicklebar mower on the back of it, and it did a great job, but it doesn't really mulch it up, it just lops it off and it falls and it's now in the road and everything else, and, so, there, the, that sicklebar mower is low maintenance, just not the right application for what we're trying to do with it, great for the farmer in the field, but not by the roadside. So the ditch bank flail mower would go behind, it could go behind both tractors, but it real, primarily would go behind the Kubota, which is a smaller tractor, it's fitted, sized for it, and it sticks out thirty-two inches or so beyond the wheels, so as we creep the edge of the road, this thing can be tilted down, so if the road starts pitching away, it can be tilted down, it can be retracted in and out, um, but it's going to get the roadsides, which we primarily need to get, and then the ditch bank, or the, uh, over-the-rail mower can, you know, get to the farther sides or farther away on, on the trees on the backside that are, um, starting to grow towards the road. It just, I, I, I've been here for five and a half years and have not cracked the code on getting the roadside mowed, it's frustrating, it's frustrating, not for me, just for me, it's frustrating for the highway department employees, because I'm the one griping to them, and then they're sitting there looking at the tractor because it's broken down again. So, um, this would be a, I think, a purchase that would serve the town well, um, to get these roadside mowed and a better application than that damn, uh, over-the-rail mower.
Are you basically saying that the mowers we have now are not equipped to go over the guardrails?
No, this isn't over the guard, the one we have is equipped to go over the guardrails, this, the one we have right now, the, the, the New Holland, is not really designed to ride along the edge of the road and get that stuff that's three feet from the white line back. That's, so we bought it, we didn't really know that, we kind of went on a whim with that thing, and, um, it was going to do all these wonderful things, and it's not really designed to do everything, has a, has a specialty.
Was the New Holland the machine we bought from Middlebury College?
No, that was the Trockless, we bought the New Holland from the city of Albany, they used it to mow Penn Stock with, so it had low time on it and stuff like that, but, I mean, anybody that's been around since that time knows that, that thing has been a lemon, there's a guy sitting in the back of the room that will test of it, um, it's just been a maintenance nightmare.
Been a lemon and we've got it, right?
We own the lemon, we haven't made any lemonade.
Yep. How many tractors do we now have for mowing?
Just have one, we have the New Holland, but the Kubota's the one down the sewer plant, but it's a smaller tractor and it, it's perfect for this application, so, we can get the road, we can get that close in, three feet from the edge of the road, and then the, as the, as time permits, we can go through with the, over-the-rail mower and get farther in the trees that are poking out, because a ditch bank isn't going to get trees that are three, three or four feet out the ground.
Where would you get the money?
Out of the highway budget.
Out of the highway budget? Any other questions for Mike?
Just one, did you, did you say that this would go on either tractor?
It will, the only, the downside to the, putting in on the New Holland is that it's not going to stick very far beyond the wheels, the outer edge of the wheels, because the, the tractor's wider in the back end. It's not a great application for the, for the New Holland, but it's a great, it's a great application for the Kubota.
Where I was going with that is that for some reason the Kubota was in the shop, you could put that, you could put this mower on the New Holland and run it.
Yes, that, that can be a wide path, that's all.
I understand that.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we authorize the town manager to purchase a Cummings and Bricker flail mower from Salem Farm Supply for seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
And a second, discussion?
I think we've done that.
I believe, I'm just being polite.
I know.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. ARPA discussion, I believe we've already had some of that, but, uh, Mike, uh, you have some more?
Well, I guess it's more, um, depending on how you look at it. I presented this to the board and there's some copies in the back of the room if anybody wants to look at them, um, and a lot of it's included in my report as well, because I just try to explain it more in the report, but there's, the document that you have, um, I'm not going to try to insult your intelligence if you can read, but, the green, the green, first page in green is stuff that's already been obligated by the select board using ARPA funds, so, people that can't see that, that's three hundred and ninety-three thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and twelve cents. The second page, in rose colored, is things that I, I'm proposing the board can consider or use of ARPA funds, and I'll, I'll base, premise it with looking at why I selected this stuff and why I went through the nut roll, or the gyrations where this is, if the town, if the board of sewer commissioners can use the funds from the sewer plant, those wastewater treatment facility reserves to cover those, um, those extensions of sewer, that gives greater flexibility to the select board for other things, um, so that's, that was the catalyst in my thinking, um, and, I don't know, just off the hell train thought. Let me back up for now, I gotta, I gotta re, rewalk my mental steps here.
Been a long evening.
You're not, you're not old enough to have to do that, just Jim and I do.
Glad you mentioned it, very well, thank you.
I'm getting there, catching up with you. So, so this is just some ideas of things that I know, again, from past experience, sitting here on a daily basis, trying to troubleshoot issues and shortfalls, and, one of the things that's been apparent, um, and you, you guys have seen it, you, I'm sorry, you guys, I'm sorry, Mary Lee, um, the boards have seen it, is our reserves, and we just haven't been adequately putting money in the reserves to keep up with the cost of equipment, and another thing that I use in my considerations is, some of the board members in the past have made comments about reducing the fleet, reducing the number of vehicles, and this, by, by using this template here, there are, there are ways to reduce our number of vehicles that we have to maintain, insure, register, um, and keep, and put back into a replacement schedule, um, but it's going to take some seed money, which I place in here, to get us to that point. For example, Chief Leftini, he's not even here to take the shots, um, so, on, for example, with the police department, we know that the last two cars, they've come to you, they've come to the board, and they've struggled to have the money available, based on what we've been putting in the reserves, to purchase the car, so, they're borrowing from the next year and, or we're trying to find carryover money, um, if, if the board were to take one point, whatever, I'm going to find the page, um, the remaining balance I'm looking for here.
It's like three hundred and ninety thousand dollars?
Well, the, the, what I, what I was trying to find is the, um, like, one, one million dollars, let's say, the round figure, um, close to that, because it was one point-
Your proposal.
Three, four, nine, so, one, one million and forty-eight thousand dollars or so, um, and, and were to buy this car, looking at what they're putting in the reserve, over the next couple of years, it would get them back on track so that they don't go through this nut roll with the board every year about how they're going to pay for it, and, let's go trade the constable's car for some money, and it just puts it back into a normal rotation schedule, um, that will fund not only the car, but the, what we've been experiencing of twelve thousand dollars to equip it. So sixty grand, I looked at the prices, I've got this stuff here, I got one as late as this, this afternoon, on what it would cost to replace a vehicle now, and we're talking sixty grand equipped, so, forty-eight grand, forty-nine grand for the vehicle and twelve thousand or so to equip it. That's just an example, um, the highway department, the plan with the highway department would be to consolidate two single axle trucks into one tandem, multiple reasons, one, it holds more materials, so we don't run it around so much during the winter, and two, it has better resale value. What we're finding, we try to sell these single axle trucks with, they're beat up, nobody wants them, and if they do, they want them for pennies, and tandems just hold their value, but I, I was looking at it going, there's, there's a way to reduce the fleet, which takes it, one vehicle out of our replacement plan, um, because they need two vehicles, and, and, just to preface it, um, the four fifty, I, I begged the mechanic to keep that thing going through the winter, Lee, can you please get it, limp this thing through the winter? And, there's a, there's a program out there for municipalities through the treasury, Vermont treasury, it's two percent interest rate, we can get a hundred and ten thousand dollars towards the purchase of a vehicle, so that big vehicle, the, the initial cost that Evan, the mechanic, got back from Delores for an international, was two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars with plow, everything equipped on it. If we apply for the grant program, that would take a hundred and ten thousand dollars off that price, which we could have then afforded to purchase finance on our own, but that leaves the four fifty, that, that one ton, I'm asking that the board consider buying the one-ton outright, um, it comes with a plow and the truck, and that would get us back on track with the, the, the next thing in our, that's in the queue, I guess, for replacement there, is, would be the greater. And so we're talking a long, we got some time, but to be able to get us back on track and keep that money going into reserve that's not being, uh, utilized for fixing of everything, it could happen. So that was where the thinking was on that one. Um, I could keep going through it, I'm just not sure you're, what you have for questions, but, um, I certainly would pause if there's any questions.
Joe?
I guess I have two, uh, questions, uh, particularly, one is related to the, uh, recommendation for the investment in Castleton Village School. And clearly, the, the future of that building is, is undetermined at this time and, um, could, the future of it could be resolved potentially, uh, in, in a matter of months, perhaps. The other comment I have is about the, uh, the, the principle of, uh, paying for certain vehicles now outright, uh, so that in the future, the reserves will pay for them, and, uh, I, I understand the logic of that and I agree with it, but, in order to support some of these recommendations, for example, the police department's sixty thousand dollar cruiser, uh, purchase, I would want to see a spreadsheet on how the reserves are going to, in the future, keep up with, uh, need to retire cars and with inflation, um, and of course, I would only be interested in the complete package, not just the vehicle, obviously, it has to be equipped. If, if that plan is, is, uh, on paper and defensible, then I think your proposal holds water.
Okay.
And I would say the same thing is true for the fire department.
Uh, can I comment on the village school? Again, it was a placeholder, knowing that if the town ends up owning the bill- Again, it was a placeholder, knowing that if the town ends up owning the building, whatever happens, because you have until December 31st of '24 to make decisions anyway, to obligate it. It's just, as this progresses or moves on through its evolution, if the town ends up owning it, then we are going to have to consider how to fix things when they need to be fixed. So this was just kind of a placeholder, knowing that the roof has been a source of discussion or concern for some, or not a concern for some, I guess, depending on who you talk to. So that was there. If you took that out of there, you know, you're really, after what I'm proposing, the remaining ARPA funds, or 300,000, let's say, it was a little over that. If you add the 175 back into it for now, that's 475, let's round figures, of the money that the town still, the select board still has authority, having jurisdiction over it to decide what they want to do with it. You've covered a lot of the gaps that we're facing, and hopefully I'll be able to come back to you with an argument that holds water, and you can see the merit in it. And then it still would give you $475,000 of other things that you might want to use it for.
Well, just for a point of clarification, Mike, you mentioned December 2024. I'm not sure everyone in the audience knows the significance of that date.
Okay. The significance of December 31st of 2024 is that the municipality or the authority over these ARPA funds have to obligate the funds by December 31st of 2024. And another significant date is December 31st of 2026, and the funds have to be committed or spent by that date. So those are the two milestones or marks on the wall that we have to adhere to.
I just received this this morning, and we've already had a discussion about it, Mike, late this morning. I have to do a lot more thinking on it before I go down this road.
Well, just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't asking for, I wasn't looking for a decision tonight, I just wanted to be able to put it out there for digestion and discussion. And I've got some marching orders here to come up with some supporting information on how, if you were to do this, how those reserves will sustain themselves in the future to keep up with the replacement of our vehicles.
Will you also include the money that's in the reserve funds now, for each of these departments?
Yeah, and that's, you know, I think you guys maybe got your financial reports, but if you look at some of those, and I do too, if I can find it, some of those reserves are fairly low. Right now, if we had to replace a truck in the highway department, we got $77,000. That is not going to, that would cover maybe a couple of the, some tires and maybe an engine replacement. The fire vehicles, I think the chief wants to meet with the Public Safety Committee and come up with a pitch for that, but the price of that truck that they asked the board to approve a year or so ago has gone up about $150,000. So if we wait more time, it's probably going to go up even more. That's not a, I'm not trying to...
I thought we were ordering that truck.
No.
Huh? Thought we were ordering the latter?
Yeah, that's the latter.
That's a different truck.
Okay.
So it's going to deplete a lot of that reserve there. And that's why my proposal in the document I gave you is, it consolidates some vehicles down and gets some stuff that has, I don't know, greater capability or greater flexibility. Anyway, the one that I look at, probably the best, is the transfer station reserve account, that's almost $102,000. And if we can get out of repair, or if we can get away with repairing the roll-off truck for that amount that they, that was like $10,000 or so, that's a great, that's a good tool for us to blimp this thing along until we can find something better. But right now, if it's fixed and the frame is fixed on it, we'll be able to use that for a while. So that reserve is probably pretty healthy, but the police department reserve is $34,000.
Okay, but you're going to come back with?
Yep, I just wanted to share that information for us, not everybody sees it.
Okay, with that said, can we move on?
Unless you have questions, I mean.
Just one comment real quick, Joe's, I agree with everything that Joe said, and I would like to, unless you weren't, maybe I'm not clear, but in addition to the police department, those reserve account analysis for the highway and the fire department as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe I wasn't clear on that, but...
Okay.
I'm clear on it.
Okay.
All set. Okay. Moving on to the manager's report. You must be running out of steam by now, Mike.
I am. I don't know if everybody had a chance to thoroughly read over, a lot of it has to do with the, my discussion about the ARPA funds. But just to make some points. On page one, under the Parsons Hills, I asked for the $92,000 in that ARPA funds because that's our share of that project. But we also know that our share, we were sure our share of the project in the village when they went through that whole layout of that, that $92,000 would allow that money to go there, or you just use, you choose to use ARPA, one or the other. But it's, that was a change to the final rule. The new final rule said that you can use ARPA now to pay for the town's share of federal grants.
It seems like it's got to the point now where you could almost use ARPA funds for candy canes at Christmas.
It said normal provisions are governed. They changed it from water, sewer, broadband, and stuff like that, and you could use it for...
Well, you and I know we have a disagreement on that, which is fine.
Well, I didn't write the damn rule, Jim, that's what the rules say.
What you should use it for and what you wish to use it for are two different things.
Why they did it was some towns didn't get enough ARPA funds because of their population to do much with it. So they were really doing small things, but they couldn't go and, you know, put in big infrastructure.
Let's not delay it, let's move on.
Go ahead, Mike.
All right, so that was an explanation on that one. The salt and sand shed is another, if I'm able to apply for it this year, that whole NEPA, the Environmental Policy Act, if we're able, if I'm not able to apply because for some reason, it's not, the scoping study doesn't satisfy that, then I have to wait another year to apply.
Then why can't you apply?
I'm going to apply, if it's eligible. If they say the NEPA, they need, we need that environmental stuff done, that environmental study done, which was done as part of the scoping study, but if they find it not acceptable, then I can't even apply for that grant.
So what do you have to do to make it eligible to apply?
Go through the whole process to, the environmental study being done.
And what's that cost?
I don't know yet.
Who's going to pay for it?
I haven't got there yet. The town will have to pay for it, but...
Yeah, I know.
But it's possible that the previously done study may be adequate.
Yes, they went through and did the archaeological, environmental stuff through all that property, so I'm hopeful that that will satisfy it, but I'm waiting for an answer.
Okay.
But I guess, again, it goes back into, if it's not, if it's not allowed, or it's not going to be accepted, that study that was done already, then just know that I'm going to have to apply again in the fall of next year, and that's going to put the salt and sand shed actually farther out. Because they're telling me from the time that this environmental stuff is done, the bid packet goes out, somebody did bid on this, we're probably talking two to three years. Just so it's transparent. I've said that all along, it's going to be three years. Just that, could extend it another year now if that environmental stuff isn't accepted. Grants and aid, let's see, nothing on that one. Just to update, the roll-off truck was brought to Central Vermont to be worked on. The new roustabout was started work today. His name is Peter Marshall, and he was at the highway garage today. So if you're out and about and you see a new face out there at the transfer station, it's likely him, and his name is Peter Marshall. He's from Grand Ole Air.
Can I ask you a question about the wastewater treatment facility?
Yeah.
You last highlighted, second to last highlighted sentence says the, no, last sentence, "Project was approximately $290,000 lower than the $2.5 million bond capacity." What is the period of the bond?
Has to be, this project had to be, the one that was approved, had to be completed by November, or October 30th of this year, and final billing by November 29th of this year. The question I'm getting from the bond bank now is, does the town want to use any of the remaining capacity under that bond for wastewater projects? So I just, I haven't got clarification on that whole pump station issue, whether or not, because that was part of the Aldridge and Elliot's original proposal, was the replacement of the Bombazine pump station. And the email traffic I got said, from Jason Booth, would be that it would be eligible. But the cost went from, what they originally proposed was $250,000, now they're saying somewhere around like, almost close to $400,000. But I talked to Russ about that, Joe, and he basically said, "I think we can get away with not replacing that pump station and replacing the rails in there so they can easily get the pumps in and out," where that's their struggle right now.
Russ is the operator?
Our chief operator.
Does the engineer agree with that, that assessment?
That's what we're waiting for, that assessment from Jason Booth, from Aldridge and Elliot.
So we have received $290,000 that we don't need to spend at this point.
Well, we haven't received it, it's a reimbursement program, so we bill against the bond capacity. So there's 290,000 left in remaining bond capacity of the 200. So the bill just came in, the final bill for the sewer plant was 2.1, 2.2 million.
But are we paying interest on $290,000 that we're not going to be spending?
No. The generator for the Sucker Brook pump station is there, the switch, there's still some bits on the part, but on the 13th, Jim from Brookfield is supposed to be here, somebody to do, work with Russ to make a temporary connection so that it can be turned on and used in case of power, but it won't be on an automatic transfer switch. It'll have to be manual. They're working on, I'm on page five, under inspection of gravity sewer lines. They're just waiting for, the schedule was supposed to be this week, but waiting on an exact date from the company. Most of you have probably seen that the paving was done on South Street. We've got some shoulder work to do, some line striping to do, but the majority, the big stuff has been done, which was Elmontry School Road, North Road, north section of that, South Street, Elmont, I said Elmontry School Road, Drake Road, and then we've got some smaller portions of that. So we're supposed to meet with Tim Rice this week to go over where we're at with the budget and remaining, as it pertains to the remaining projects, parts of the project. Hopefully, that there's good, I'm on page seven, under FEMA, the good news is, all indications are that the town won't have to worry about that trestle on South Street, and that B-Trans will be taking care of that.
That's good.
That is wicked good news. So we got a conference call I asked for with this guy named John Nummy's leaving, and he's got a replacement coming in, and I wanted to be able to talk to both of them, so nothing's lost in their transition. We're still, I'm not sure about this, I'm on page eight, bleeds over into page nine, the Hydral Plaza, you can read what I put there, but basically, unless, Nancy Libatory was in, talking to myself, and Jim was in there, you know, unless Joe was willing to bring this thing up to standards, it was kind of a non-starter. So I got to follow up with Joe, I probably know the answer. But I won't, I guess I shouldn't speculate. Part department roof, the claim was approved, work's been started, we're still going to have to do the inside part with McLeurs, but they want to make sure that it's not leaking before they replace the sheet rock and insulation and stuff in the ceiling there. So it's just ongoing, but all but $1,000 will be, end up being covered by, that's our deductible.
Can I just add to that for a minute?
Yeah.
I happened to be here doing some paperwork the day Seth finished that up. Just FYI, when we come budget time, we got to think about putting some money away. Seth says that whatever type of shingles were used here are probably eight to 10 years away from being to their life expectancy, just the way the tabs are sticking and the stones are coming off. Just FYI, and so I can say it here in case something happens, that I might not be here at budget time, that you guys can think about that, that we might want to start sinking some money into reserve account for the next few years, so when it comes time to replace this, that we've got something there.
How old are the shingles?
15, we moved in here, Jim.
And how many years has it been up?
It was the winter before, so if you want to say they were up 14 for big guests.
So they're only nine years old.
That's not the last problem we're going to have with the building.
Probably not, Jim. Sometimes a cheap bidder always isn't the best room.
Yeah.
And why was it permitted? Approved?
The project manager approved it. It was, they were told not to, but they did it anyway.
Was the project manager a member of the board?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's coming from the people that told them. And there's also, I didn't know this, but digressing, but it's going to be a problem, maybe in the future, is the radiant heat that's underneath the bay out there, Paul said he's got one section shut off because it was not done properly or insulated or something, so...
As I said, it's just the beginning.
Yeah.
And how much is this building, 1.5 mil?
The whole project was somewhere, yes, in that.
And we're paying $93,000 a year, principal and interest? I think so. And we have to pay it for how many more years? You said it's 15, is it 30-year?
I don't recall it, I have a cheat sheet for that, I'm not, I don't have it with me.
I think it was a 20, Jim.
Pardon?
I think it was a 20-year bond.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's just some issues here that we're going to be dealing with. Cleaning the building, those pressure washers that next door, those are all, those are all night things. Talking about the cruiser, fire department AFG grant, so the grant that the town paid, paid LexiPaul to file the AFG grant, the Assistance to Firefighter Grant, that never got, was never approved because of an error. They've reached out several times, I did pass it on, talked to the chief about it, passed it on for he and his designee to work with the new person, because Julie Fisher's leaving, and see what they're eligible for, under this grant for this year. Because the Cascade system, the air refill station, is not, they're saying it's not eligible unless it's part of some other PPE, so personal protective equipment, but, so they're going to look into what else might be eligible. So more to follow on that one.
For the SCUBA, Seth's personal protective equipment?
It is, but...
So the fact that we chose to buy that with ARPA funds means we're ineligible for a portion of a grant that we...
Got to change it from one designee to another. Instead of being personal protective equipment, because it was combined with the SCBA, it has to go to just fire equipment, it's just a different part of the grant, the way they file it.
So they can still apply for the replacement of that?
They have to file it under a different section.
But if you're going to buy gear...
We can file it again.
Then it can be filed, because gear's personal protective equipment, they could combine the gear hopefully with the Cascade air refill station as part of that grant. So that's what the, that's what the chief is working on. Is engine six out of commission right now?
No, we have it, it's been checked by R and D, and we're waiting on alignment, and nobody around here can alignment it. nobody around here can alignment. We're called back tomorrow from place in Queensberry, and it says they can alignment.
So what the chief is talking about is engine six was involved in an internal kind of accident up at the beach during that... Responding to that boat incident on the lake, and there was some damage done to it. An insurance claim was filed. Some work's been done on it, but it sounds like the alignment and a bumper and maybe a couple other things, as it's playing out as we speak.
Truck's still functional though, right, chief?
Yes. Truck's still functional. Rode it on the call the other night afterwards.
Okay.
It's just the alignment's out, and we want to get it all double-checked.
Yeah.
Just to make sure. We just put tires on it that you guys approved the last meeting, that we want to make sure they're not going to struggle them off.
Right. Does it want to hang onto the wheel when you drive it down the road?
No, I drive fine. It's just the steering wheel's off a quarter turn.
Oh. On page 17, under the problem trees, the highway foreman toured around town with Tom Johnston from Trees Incorporated and looked at a bunch of roads and found the worst areas and is going to provide a cost estimate to rectify those problem areas or problem trees. I just... You don't have it now because I asked him to add Moscow Road onto that, and so I'm waiting for that back, but we're probably talking over $30,000 definitely. And that would be the completion of my report. Barring your question.
So when do you think you'll have a status on the grader?
We got one today that they... What I got was they're well underway with their repairs, but they found a few other things that they're looking at and will be calling us on once they determine what the prognosis and the fixed plan will be. I don't know what it is. It was very cryptic and didn't say what it was for. Just found they found more things.
So when you know that that's going to... Fair enough. Moving on. Purchase orders for approval.
We make a motion. We approve purchase order number 050786 to Ferguson Water Works for Griffin Road... Well, basically for culverts for the Griffin Road Grant Project for $2,499.10.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Make a motion. We approve purchase order number 050796 to T-Beltwell Logging for tire chains for the sum of $5,319.86.
I'll second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Make a motion. We approve purchase order number 050797 to Able Tractor for excavator repair for the sum of $2,542.78.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none? Got another one, Dick?
I have two more.
Did you vote on that one?
We haven't voted yet.
Oh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Make a motion. We approve purchase order number 050798 to Farnham Scale Service for new LED display at the transfer station for the scales at... For the sum of $2,819.67.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Make a motion. We approve purchase order number 051019 to advance pavement for the Castleton Village School ceiling and lines for the sum of $3,680.76.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
One more.
Ready for the warrants? Ready for the warrants, Mr. Chairman?
I'm just getting ready. Go for it.
Make a motion. We approve the following warrants. 0830 for $171.00 and no cents. 0831 for $22,078.21. 0907 for $28,930.91. 0911 for $440,485.45. 0831P for $18,633.26. 0907P for $19,275.07.
If there's a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mike?
On 0831P, it's 63. You said 633.
I'll stand corrected. So the warrant number 0831P is for the sum of $18,663.26.
Good catch, Mike. All those in favor of the corrected number indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have some more.
I would make a motion that we approve the following warrants. 0901P for $641.32. And 0908P for $641.32.
Second. Second.
Discussion.
I'll recuse myself.
You recuse yourself, okay? Wait a minute. We've got one more. Is that three?
We haven't voted on those two yet.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those are the polls.
We'll make a motion. We approve warrant number 0912 for $385.60.
Second.
Second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
I recuse myself.
Joe recuses himself.
Aye.
Is that the original there that passed you by mistake?
Yep.
Want to back?
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe.
Oh, here it goes, Jim.
I knew it was going somewhere. Thanks.
Yankees are beating the Red Sox 9-1.
My two favorite teams. Presentation. My two favorite teams are the same, too, as you.
Pardon?
My two favorite teams are the Red Sox and whoever beats the Yankees. I got to tell my niece who lives in Houston that I'll always root for the Astros.
What's that?
Postball 2-11.
Is it?
Yeah.
Here go, Jimmy. Didn't miss it.
Only half a pound of paper today, huh? Only half a pound of paper today.
That's right. Lucky trees are still cheap.
Well, fortunately, they do grow back. Just takes a long time.
Renewable resource.
Well, that species I like to make my doors and want to paint great stuff out of, comes from Uruguay. It's plantation grown.
I'm confused.
Red grandis.
Grandis.
Red grandis. It's a species of eucalyptus.
This is one of one.
And somebody with a lot of foresight...
You replaced their...
This is page two.
Eighty years ago started planting these trees.
One of one.
Cattle grazing, you know, the defunct cattle grazing.
I seem to be missing a piece.
And it's great grandchildren are now harvesting these trees.
I think it went with the next one, yeah.
Marketing the lumber worldwide.
This is page one of one, though.
Been planting these trees for the last eight decades.
Wow. So this is page two.
I'm glad they didn't do that in Lahaina.
At the same one?
Yeah.
I guess I'd let you...
So I happily, once I found out about this species of wood...
Put Dick figured out.
Relatively inexpensive.
I don't know where that went to. I don't seem to see a second piece.
I've been using it, and very stable and decay resistant. So it's got all the qualities you want.
0907.
What do you compare it to that I might know?
Oh, well, we'll care about it tomorrow.
It looks a lot like Moranti or Luann. It's a tropical hardwood.
Okay.
It's an ugly version of...
So I can hide so no one will say something or something?
Yes.
You could probably convince people that didn't know better that it was, you know, with the rice stain, but it's not mahogany. But it has a lot of the same stability and decay resistant properties.
Well, that's interesting. You mentioned so many trees, woods, that I've never heard of before.
Well, I do a lot with the tropicals that are... And some... Fortunately, some of them are now responsibly harvested instead of how they were done for... They're still, don't get me wrong, they're still doing things they shouldn't be doing in that part of those parts of the world, but...
Okay. Is there any need for recap or items for follow-up?
I have nothing.
Nothing, Joe? Well, in... Under the heading of Select Board Comments and Concerns...
Yeah.
I wanted to... I gave manager a warning about this, but I wanted to bring up the... Our relationship to the Hubbardton Select Board specifically as it relates to their responsibility for contributing to the costs of maintaining the building. And I asked Mike whether they have made any payments to us and how often they've been invoiced or reminded of the financial, specific financial obligation they owe us. And I don't want to get into the detail tonight, but the short answer is they, as I think you know, they have not paid us anything at all. And it just seems that we should express our concern about that to Attorney Howe. And I'm not sure he knows that they haven't done that. I'm not sure he knows that they've been billed monthly for their obligation, but I think through him, we should express our concern that we're not getting paid.
I believe that communication went to a member of the board and a copy to Attorney Chris Hart.
I know there was a point at which we did...
Yes, we did, yeah.
...respond to them a few months ago. I would be inclined to send them not only the memorandum of understanding with the area highlighted that where they agree to pay 11% of the operating expenses, but also send him individual copies of all of the various invoices and reminders we've sent them.
Okay. Can we do that, Mike? I'm making a note, and we'll do it tomorrow. Okay?
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have a question.
Yeah, Mary Lee.
And I guess it's what I heard about the building falling apart.
Pardon?
The building falling apart.
The village school?
No, here.
Oh, here. Yes, yes. Not falling apart.
Well, crumbling here and there, corners, okay. Roofs, something. How can a project manager okay something without the select board okaying it?
I don't know. Does anyone know?
I wasn't here to know the group dynamics, but the project manager was on the select board, so I'm sure there was some discussion about it. So I don't know how it transpired.
Okay.
I'll plead innocent. I was not on the board at the time.
You were. You missed that year.
Oh, no. I didn't get all of that one.
No, I was just... I was just curious how one person can okay it, and obviously the rest of the board didn't, or whatever.
Right. Well, I might kind of compare it to the sewer plant. So I did the walkthrough with the sewer plant, and with the contractor, the project manager, our staff, and did the... Look for... There was no punchless items. So it was... So basically, we went past substantial completion into acceptance. So I accepted it on behalf of the town. You guys have been approving the warrants with all the funding in it, but I don't think you guys... The select board was going to go down to the sewer plant, accept it. It's kind of not the process. But so it could have been the same way there. Somebody come back to the select board, said everything's good. We sign off on it, and maybe that's how it transpired.
Okay.
Again, speculation because I wasn't here, but...
It just seemed weird.
Also had a project engineer was here through all the meetings and steps of that, too.
Okay, anything else on select board comments or concerns? Need an executive session, Mike?
For real estate.
Real estate?
All right, I make a motion that we go into executive session for real estate with the board and the town manager at 9:07.
Is there a second?
Second.